Planning Board meeting at 7:00 PM. At this time, will everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the repeated justice of our-
That went from really far back, didn't it?
Lynn, to you for the open public meeting statement, please.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, the Sentinel and the South Jersey Times notified of this meeting. Public notice was posted in the municipal building and on the website. The township and Franklin Flit. Planning is called to order by our chairman, Joseph Petch, and we'll take a roll call.
Yeah, before we do that, let's seat Mr. Swade for- it's Ralph, Ralph this evening.
And then we go to roll call, please.
Okay, for Ralph. Okay, and the roll call, huh? Mr. Dagan.
Here.
Mrs. Flame.
Here.
Mr. Rohr.
Here.
Mr. Malady.
Here.
Mr. Kelly is absent. Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Mr. Handy is absent. Mr. Schwade.
Here.
Mr. Traveler is absent. Mr. Petch.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of the May 18th meeting, please.
Make a motion we approve the minutes as listed for the May 18th meeting.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And me as well, Lynn.
Two extensions.
Let's move on to the secretary's report that's enclosed in the documents. Is there a motion to accept the, yeah, the secretary's report?
Take a motion to approve the secretary's report?
Second.
All right, moving second to roll call, please.
I'm sorry. Mr. Dagan.
Yes.
Mrs. Flame.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Here.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes.
Thank you.
And under resolutions, I see there just none. Michael, you want to comment on the, oh, never mind, it's not necessary, it's not. We're good. First application this evening is PB 21-2. Jerry Calucci.
Chair. Mr. Chairman, before we do that, in case anybody's here for the other application, which is being postponed, maybe make that announcement so they can leave in case they're here.
Yep.
The David and Jean Paulville, PB 21-3, block 702, lots 12 and 13, minor subdivision, lot line adjustment. Their council asked to be postponed until the July meeting. If anybody's here for that application, it would be hers on July 20th, is that our date?
Yeah, 20th.
Oh, here it is. I believe it is the 20th. July 20th, 7:00 PM.
There will not be any additional notice.
Yep.
If any reason does not appear on that night, then there will be notice. It has to be postponed further. If everybody's interested in that, it would appear on July 20th, 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Calucci.
Would you swear, Mr. Calucci, please?
For the record?
All right, Chair, could you explain the application?
It is a minor subdivision of, on the, no, explaining it, let me see. The proposal for the subdivision is to square off some property and to establish a new lot for future use.
Is there, there's no waiver request here, correct? Or is there any waiver?
No.
No waiver request, okay. The only question I had earlier, and I think I just found it, the, on Nicholas Drive, the, if there was a house built on that lot, the driveway access would be all, have to be, would build the Boulevard?
Yes, it's shown on the Boulevard.
Okay, I think I just found it up in the, with the one corner of the drawing there. Because of the island on Nicholas, Nicholas Drive would limit access to that property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a question for you, Jerry. The, have you reviewed the county report? Because the county specifically said the driveway cannot be on the Boulevard, it must be on Nicholas Drive.
That report I haven't seen.
Yeah, it's on the county planning board?
They have, I've given that, the, that information to the surveyor, and he was working on that, working as far as they wanted a deeded, it's not deeded, they wanted right-of-way. That was Mike, the only thing I knew about.
Jason, I had a, I had a similar situation a few years back where I did a cul-de-sac on a county road, and they did the same thing. They required the, the access to be off the county road. I don't know, I didn't say anything that would require that, but I know Gloucester County required me to do the same thing. But I don't think it would make a difference whether the access, if they were, if the Glouce, if the county was requiring that, I don't think it would make a difference in the approval. If you, the vehicle would have to, you know, if the county says, well, look, we're going to, we're going to require that access to come off the, not off the county road, but off the, off the access road, then, you know, somebody's going to have to, you're going to have to, you know, kind of turn around to get in the driveway. But I mean, to me, that wouldn't be that big of a deal. I think somebody buying the place.
I don't think you-
But I don't know, I mean, the county's going to-
I found it.
Actually, I think the county planning division suggested the driveway be placed at the, the opening between the two, the two islands along Nicholas Drive, if I remember correctly.
Were they suggesting it or are they requiring it?
Requiring it. Well, they're not requiring it, they're not, they suggested they place it in that location. They're not requiring it to be there, but they are, they're denying access from the Boulevard.
But I mean, that's a county approval. Would that really have much to do with us if we approved it subject to the county approval?
No, I mean, but I just wanted to clarify for the record that the driveway's not going to be off the Boulevard. The driveway is going to be off the Nicholas Drive because the county has denied that, that right-of-way or that access.
Oh, that, you mean that division between the, in the, in the medial they're referring to?
Yeah, I'm trying to-
I haven't found that piece of it.
Yeah, it actually, it actually requires a deed restriction. It says, "The lot with frontage on West Boulevard, Nicholas Drive, must be deed restricted so that no access will be permitted directly onto West Boulevard. A declaration of restriction or deeds restricting access should be prepared by the applicant's attorney and sent to the office to be reviewed. Execution of said deed should be completed prior to final approval by the county." Just goes on some other language.
The access paragraph is specific, Jason. It says, "Plans must be revised to show proposed access on West Boulevard relocated to Nicholas Drive along with a gap from the median."
Gotcha.
They are required.
Oh, they are, okay, they are required, yeah.
They are required, yes.
Oh, I gave, I gave him that.
Yeah, I just got it. Okay, you got it too?
Yeah.
It would have gone directly to him, your address.
Would it be a problem approving it subject to the county, getting the access from the county?
Getting an access off of the Boulevard instead of-
No, I mean, would it be, would there be any problem approving the application subject to him meeting the county requirements with the county?
I mean, it doesn't matter. I don't think there's any requirement.
I know in the, in the past, there was an issue with the access along that, and that median was there for the purpose of, I live in a neighborhood of half of the 200 feet, but there was an application where it determined that there was a, a restriction from access where that median was to prevent people from spinning around there. They have to, the next lot had to be out.
There's a tight turn.
Yeah, so I don't know whether-
But I mean, I-
... existence and that the, you know, you might have-
Well, there is a driveway going into the other property from that, that median you're referring to.
On the other side where-
Yeah, it just goes, it goes in and out on that, the same area.
That was the, yeah, that's the person who actually built the entire development.
That was-
It's out there now, but it was, um-
I think it was back to the original planning where they did that, that access.
There was a, there was this, some restriction on that side, really raising it because if you were kind of selling a lot and there was a puddle, certain puddle issue, that could be an issue.
Issue.
I don't know whether you're going to fight with the county or not, trying to get the access off the county road or whether-
Path of least resistance is always the best.
I think, I mean, this is my opinion, is, as, as a home builder that has built homes, I really believe that if you turn the house, front of the house on that street and put the driveway right where it's coming in on that other, on that upper side, and I, I didn't know if you'd have to move the septic or something to try to make that work. I think you can make that work and make that beautiful. I really do.
I haven't, I don't have a septic design yet that's going to be based on the-
But yeah, I mean, I would, I would flip the house, front the house on that road, bring the driveway right in like, like you said, between the two, and, and I think it would be perfect. I think when, when you look at that, again, a lot of times, people can't visualize it on the paper, but when they actually see the house built, it would be, or see the plan, and you have the house laid out there and the driveway coming in there, I think it would be fine. I really do, that's my belief.
Mike, but you're saying you believe there's a restriction in the prior approval?
I know there was this discussion some years ago about there being a restriction on access on that side. Back when Patty Noblock was here as a planner, I think she did raise it at some point in some application. I don't know whether, whether that still exists.
Are you referring to a 10-foot strip they deemed as a spite strip?
I think that's what-
That was, that was put up for a bid between myself, the adjacent lots. I bought that about five years ago, and I did a lot re-subdivision and made it all one lot. So, we gained the vibe.
I think it was a 10-foot strip, so.
Yeah, so that's been acquired and it's already part of the, the, instead of me going for a lot re, you know, for this, for this lot that I have proposed now, we ended up combining that 10-foot strip with the, with the main lot under a re-sub, or a combi-
Consolidate.
Consolidation, thank you. And then in turn, now, years later, we're going for the subdivision to clean it up.
And if you front, if you front the lot on that, on that, if the county turns around and says, well, look, you got it fronted on this road and you fronted on that road, I really feel that it would, if the house was fronted on that road, the driveway was coming off that road, I feel that it would really work well. And I, you know, I also feel that, I forgot what I was going to say, but, yeah, I think it would work, and I think that it would, you would also save because you wouldn't have to get the county permit for the access.
All right, you mean as far as, yeah, for the-
Yeah, and then they require certain, you know, they, on their access, they require you to do certain things in their access in the, in the right-of-way. So, you kind of eliminate that county permit, eliminate the county, to me, that's a plus.
No, I, I think, I think as far as that, your idea suggestions are by far better than doing it from the county road. That way, I think it would be a nice cleaner look.
John, John, I hear you, and I actually, I agree with you. My, my concern, well, I have two concerns. One, the research needs to be done on whether there is a restriction on that cut through. And secondly, not making, not, not attempting to make it more difficult for the applicant, but I would, I'd be more comfortable with a engineer's review on that turning radius coming in, the, an individual homeowner coming home and making that turn there. I don't know the distance between Island One and Island Two and how safe it is to make that turn across traffic, or across Nelson Drive into a driveway. And I would be more comfortable with the engineer reviewing that and being okay with that, that plan. You know, I, I don't see how else, you know, I don't see how else you can get access to that lot without coming in off the Boulevard.
Yeah, contrary to what you're saying, Joe, I actually went out and visited the site and there was actually, I mean-
Is it safe turning?
If your concern is like for emergency apparatus, I can't, I can't state to that, but there's plenty of room-
For a vehicle.
For a vehicle to traverse that area, you know.
To make that turn, okay. And not being familiar with it, that's my concern, is that, is it going to be a tight turn for a car coming home every night?
Right, I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, Mike, but you could drive by 10 times a day, so.
A car, pickup truck, if somebody tried to come in there with a-
Truck or trailer or something, yeah.
An average passenger vehicle or something, not happening.
Okay, well, you guys know the area better than, you know, than I. I'm looking at a drawing without knowing the distance there. Anybody else?
Michael, any comments?
Michael, any comments?
No, no, I mean, if this goes, you'll, maybe send me that deed consolidation, just so we have that, we know that-
Was there? Yeah, well, it's actually listed on here as one complete lot now. Before, it was two lots. And now it's no longer on this and it does exist. In fact, I may even have-
Thank you, as far as, I might have that file with me, I don't know. I wouldn't have that cleared up anyway, for the record.
Yeah, I understand.
We're going to have to deal with the county and all their right-of-way stuff, unfortunately, but that's the way it is.
And Michael, the, what would the verbiage be on the pre, the previous approval and the restrictions that may have been out there? How would that be worded into this?
I don't know if there was an approval that addressed that.
Restriction.
Restriction, I'm not really sure. I know it was raised now that, now that he mentions that 10-foot, it was a 10-foot strip attached to some other lot.
No. No, as a matter of fact, I know the history of it because I tried to get, originally, I tried to get a right-of-way. The, what was her name? Oh, gosh. They were, the family was from Betterbuilt Construction. Her father was a developer, they designed the entire subdivision. Oliveri was married to it, but he had no access to the, you know, to the, to the real estate. And in turn, I actually researched it when, who was your predecessor?
You mean Patty Noblock?
No, no, no.
Does she look, oh, Edith?
Edith.
Oh, my goodness.
That's how far back it goes.
You're going way back.
All right, so Edith had, during those, well, I had the minutes then. What they did was, and in fact, my brother was on the planning board, they wanted the lot to be attached. They left it as a similar lot, and the verbiage during the meeting was not to leave it like that because of a, it was be, misconstrued as a spite lot. But in fact, nothing was ever done with it. The entire tract was sold when she divorced her husband. I think a Turkish gentleman bought it. He's parceled it out in 10 pieces. He had no idea that that lot existed. I knew it existed, I reached out to, to the original owner and developer because when I tried to acquire it, found out she was going to sell it to me, she didn't own it because it all went with the, with the original subdivision. So, with that said, it was a lot that was a limbo for maybe 20 years. And then after that, the, the, and it wasn't available for sale because no one foreclosed on it. If they closed on, it became the property of the township, and the township put it up between myself and the lady who had the attachments, either she could have it and it looked like a spoon, a long-handled spoon, or, you know, obviously it was mine. So, we had a, a bid. She didn't bid, I didn't realize it. I bid twice the asking price because it benefited me, and then I acquired it. Then I let it set for years, and then finally, I decided to put a driveway in, and with the driveway, had to combine both lots to make it, because of passing across one lot to the other, and that was several years ago. And this is the deed I think you're referring to on that one bit of lot.
Did you refer to that lot as a spite lot?
Yeah, they referred to it as a spite lot.
Like they put it there to spite the other people so they couldn't-
Well, the property that I owned.
Right. Yeah, that's, I've never heard that term used before, but that's an interesting term.
It's a 10-foot strip, you could-
Yeah, despite, spite the guy, so he couldn't, so you couldn't divide your lots and get frontage on the road.
Right, so when I acquired the property, I realized it was there.
Right.
So, I was just going to get a right-of-way. Of course, the gentleman owned it, he was sickly and his attorney had devised me, he would be more than glad to give me right-of-way. This is prior to me going through all the legal work. But he had, apparently had a couple of lots in the development that were held out on the subdivision based on the, there's two retention ponds there. And he had, they were held in escrow, apparently, for the township, and finally, when they built out the entire project, according to the attorney, for representing him, I never met him, that the lots, this goes back when Geist was, all that gang was in, they wouldn't, they wouldn't release the two lots, township at that period of time, wouldn't release them for the possibility that the retention ponds would never work. But there's no water there and they've always worked. So, those two lots are, I don't know what ever happened to them. But in any case, I'm here before you because of a minor subdivision of which the 10-foot strip has been dissolved.
That's where you bought it, there's probably one after that where you consolidate.
Yes, that's where the, well, it shows it on the, this light appearing with the surveyor. It's there. And as far as a new deed, I might have a new deed on that with it.
Right now, this is all one piece.
He owns it, he owns it right there.
Okay, but it does exist, that's one deed now.
Yeah, if there was any easement or right-of-way there, the surveyor would have to pick it up, so not being on the survey, I would imagine that it's been-
It's maybe, I think about four years ago, at least, maybe.
No, I mean, we have a licensed surveyor kind of looking, looking at that, so, I don't know.
Okay.
All right.
Is this a public mic or is this?
There was no notice, but if anybody's here and you want to be present speaking, yeah.
Do you want to, I'll make a motion to open it to public?
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. This time, we're open to public comment on this application. Name it, yep, Michael?
I do. Kevin Kelton, who are the record, Nick, 286 Nicholas Drive. I caught the last end of that. I do happen to have a, I guess this is a digital map that shows that, or a, that shows that that buffer strip, it's called a buffer strip. I think it was part of the original development that was supposed to be maintained. And for some reason, a couple of years ago, someone in town decided to sell the buffer strip, which was part of Heritage Hills, to maintain the, the strip from West Boulevard into the, all the way up Nicholas Drive. And no one in the development knew that the buffer strip was sold. Everyone assumed that the buffer strip is part of the original plans for Heritage Hills. And my diagram here shows that that buffer strip still exists on Nicholas Drive, if I could put this in the record.
Is there a name on that kind of?
You're talking about the 10-foot strip?
I guess it's a, they call that, when they take pictures from outer space.
Through the earth, satellite?
Satellite.
Aerial photograph.
Anyway, let me go on. I believe this is the second subdivision requested by the applicant. The first subdivision was when he put his, I guess, his house that he lives in, I don't know what year that was, it wasn't that long ago.
2002, 2000, maybe, yeah, 20, that's when the actual house was built, 2002, 2004.
It doesn't seem that, that long ago.
Okay, that's-
I guess this is a question for you, Joe. Was legal notice required?
And I will let the council answer that.
Yes.
Now, the lot was, the area of the lot was allowed, it's 4.54 acres, and there is no request for anything-
No waivers.
Any side, dark step actually, so the area of the lot complies.
Mm-hmm. So, he, he did not need to advertise?
Correct.
And does that include the property owners, the 200 feet?
Right, there was no variance requested, just a minor subdivision.
Okay.
Minor subdivision with no variance is you don't make it public.
And I, has the applicant stated that his intention is to put a, a house on the lot? Or what type of a structure?
He did not state that as of yet.
And really, that's not, that's not, with a subdivision, with a, with this application, that, that information is not necessary, would not be necessary. He's subdividing a lot, which he has every right to do. What he does with the lot afterwards would apply at that particular time.
Okay.
In, in, in an application process or coming back to the board, whatever the case may be.
This lot is not 4 and 1/2 acres, the remainder is, this lot is a 1 acre.
1 acre.
1 acre, okay. And so, the original subdivision hearing for Lot 53 was when? What was the date?
I do not know.
I've got the original map, it's back 2004.
4.
This is a, a survey map, and basically, all that was, it was not a subdivision, it was basically lot line changes for lot 54, is it, and 53. All I did was read, read, you can see the plan if you want.
Yeah, I have a copy here.
See the bottom of the plan?
Yes.
Well, then, there is, that wasn't a subdivision, it was a lot line adjustment. I own both lots and I decided to change, make one larger, the other-
Well, there was a subdivision because there was-
It's a subdivision, but it's create, there was no creation. It was a lot line adjustment or a re-division.
For a single, single-family home. Right, he created two, two lots.
No, there were two lots.
No, the lot line adjustment, you have two lots and you, and you leave with two lots, you're not creating any new lots.
Okay. So, I didn't, I didn't know that. I thought that was all one parcel.
No. As a matter of fact, your, your, no one placed, did the, the lot, the property set prior to that, you had Lot 51, excuse me.
54.
54, 53, 54 always existed.
Okay.
That was the Sturgis's house.
So, 53 was a flag, basically the frontage?
No, 53 was a, a 1 acre lot, and 54 was a 6 acre lot, and I made 54 a 1 acre lot and a, my residence a 6 acre lot. My res, yeah, right.
I want to ask about the curb cut. What was the, the date of the hearing for the, to create a curb cut and a secondary driveway in addition to, in addition to the initial approval, which, which had, which had a driveway on, that was approved on West Boulevard? Mike?
Kevin, I don't have that information available, and, and, and please, let's, let's stay to the application.
This, this is part of the application, this involves Lot 53.
No, you're asking me about the driveway, your, your question is on Lot 53, the driveway at that point in time?
Yes.
That, that project has been built since 2004, and I don't have the information-
No, I'm not talking about the driveway on West Boulevard. It was a second driveway created by Mr. Calucci a year or two ago that cut, cut through the woods and came out to Nicholas Drive. He was through the buffer with a apron on Nicholas Drive that was not in the original approvals for the development. So, he had to come here before the board to, to request a, a curb cut. When was that curb cut and approval granted by this board?
And again, I want to tell you, I have no idea. Michael, you want to comment on that?
I don't know that, I mean, when the original lot line adjustment was done and decided to build his house back there, we don't necessarily approve a curb cut.
Right.
The driveway can be, you know, as long as it meets requirements, it doesn't come before the planning board.
Yeah, the county and state approve curb cuts and access, access through the county roads and the state roads. On the local level, on these smaller roads, they don't- roads and the state roads. On the local level, on these smaller roads, they don't tell you exactly where you, where you got to put your curb cut, where you can put your curb cut, where you can't put your curb cut on the township roads.
Right, but being that the, that Nicholas Drive is part of Heritage Hills development, as, so the original plans that were created, there was never a curb cut coming out where Lot 53 is. The, the driveway goes out to West Boulevard. So he had to have approval from somebody here in town to put a driveway onto Nicholas Drive.
What he's, I think what Mr. Calucci was saying is that the buffer strip no longer exists, that he purchased it and he consolidated it. And also it's a mountable curb. There's no curb cuts on a mountable curb. In fact, all of the, the lots in that subdivision are mountable curb and it's just the houses.
Well, are, are we assuming that the lot line, that the buffer strip was erased?
The buffer strip was purchased by the applicant.
It was purchased from the township.
And combined with the.
It was purchased from the township, but how come the residents didn't know about it?
You have to ask township. I mean.
Joe?
Kevin, you're talking, something that happened in two thousand four or?
No, no, something that happened two years ago.
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen?
I think that's what the, was that with the deed? I think that's the one I showed you when they gave you the deed afterwards, yes. And it was put up for bidding. The only two people who were involved were the two people that could actually use the property. But the township acquired it through tax, through default, which was not, no one knew about the lot. And when I approached the township to buy it, we either right of waiting, the township said they had no, I picked the term, they didn't have any, there was, they had nothing to them.
No beneficial use.
So then in turn, when it was finally foreclosed on for bad taxes and they didn't have an owner, it would come up, then it was given, it was put up for bidding, not publicly because it's restricted, it's an unbilledable lot. It was put up for.
Only to join any property owners.
To property owners.
So really, the, the buffer strip only became the property of the township through a foreclosure. The buffer strip was not dedicated to the township as a result of the original subdivision?
Exactly.
Well, hold on.
So it was in private ownership prior to the township acquiring ownership?
All the way through until the last.
I mean, the development was, started in nineteen eighty-one, was it? Eighty-one, eighty-two? And that, as far as I know, I have the original plans for the development. That strip, buffer strip was always part of the plans for the development.
I'm not saying it wasn't part of the plan. I'm saying that it was not under the ownership of the township.
It wasn't under the ownership of like a homeowners association or anything like that. It was in private ownership.
It would be like your lot was always part of the development, but you own your lot. You're saying this buffer strip was always part of the development. Someone owned that buffer strip. Just so happened that at one point in time, it was acquired through a foreclosure by the township, who then sold the property to the current applicant. It was never there for the beneficial use of the residents of the subdivision.
Mike, do you agree with that statement?
Well, I think it was for the benefit of the residents, but the rest of it is correct, which was that apparently it wasn't part of a plan that was for the homeowners association and were deed restricted.
Okay, I'll agree. There, there is no homeowners association. There never was. I think the intent of the original plan was to maintain that buffer strip as woods, to maintain the integrity of a wooded development. There was never supposed to be along that, what do they call in this, a cartway? There was never supposed to be driveways along that cartway there. And, you know, as far as potentially him coming in there with another driveway, I don't know if that's, that's thin through there. I, I don't know. I'll have to go out there and measure the width on both sides of that island. I, I don't think, I would not recommend that. It's too, the cars come by there pretty quick. It's, it's not meant to be, to have another driveway there. I would say if this board decides to approve this subdivision, that I would like to request that a driveway or curb cut onto Nicholas Drive at that location be prohibited and put on the deed and into the record.
Thank you, Kevin.
I mean, if, if, if Mr. Calucci wants to seek a subdivision, then he should follow through with his original plans and lobby the county for that driveway as his plan state, okay?
Thank you. Motion to, is there anyone else in the public? Hearing non-entertaining motion to close the public portion, please.
So move?
Second. Move and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Back to the application. Anyone else have any comments?
I just have a question of Mr. Borelli. If we were to choose to approve the application, we're not approving any, any specific access, correct?
Well, it'd be subject to the county denial, which says that they will not allow access on the county road. And the access would have to be in that opening on Nicholas Drive.
Right.
Unless he were, if you were to not allow that, then he'd have to go back and say to the county, he wouldn't allow the subdivision on Nicholas Drive, therefore he may request them to have one of the boulevards.
I, I had an experience with the county because I was involved, involved with this, this same thing. And the county kind of said to me, look, we don't want access on the county road. This is Gloucester County, when it is available on a private, on a private drive. They have site triangles and everything else, and they, they want to keep the driveways, you know, they would rather have a, a double driveway than have a single driveway. But I know in my situation, the county was insistent to me, and I wound up having to, to bring an actual small road or cul-de-sac in, so that I was taking three properties off of a small cul-de-sac rather than fronting them on a, on a county road. So it got very expensive for me and very, to me, this is a, this is a, it's a single lot, you know, Mr. Calucci has been paying taxes on it for years. He has a right to develop it. And to me, it's, it's something that the, the board should stand up for and say, look, we got to, we got to approve this regardless of what the, what the people say.
I have a question. Teaching drivers how to drive a lot, and many times I'll see a sign that says you can't cut through the two medians, that you have to go down and around both of them. So what's preventing that from happening and then turn into the driveway?
But I don't see, even if you drove through the development and came out.
Not, not the whole development, you just go down, around, treat.
I understand it, but there's probably several ways that it could be accessed. And if you're driving at a, at a reasonable rate of speed, you know, I feel you could access the property, the property safely. And I also feel that you can make it really look nice. I mean, the way you could lay it out and lay the driveway out and have it where it looks aesthetic. It's an asset to the township. It's one, it's a single lot. This is not, Mr. Calucci's going in and saying, look, I want to put three lots here, three houses.
Yeah, I was just trying to bring an alternative to the situation, like, and in the event that that homeowner then owns boats or RVs or whatever the case is.
But I think as a homeowner, you're going to look at, you're going to look at that term, and you're going to say, well, look, if I got a trailer boat, I'm probably not going to buy that lot.
Well, you know, you might marry into that lot.
Yeah.
You know, you don't.
But I mean, that's my, that's my opinion. I have.
But with the lot.
Yeah, I have a dump trailer and I have a boat trailer, and I probably would say, look, if I can't make that turn and I can't do it comfortably, I wouldn't buy it. But there's somebody out there that would probably buy it and, and enjoy it and live there and pay taxes and be a good resident.
I think irrespective of what the county says, and I agree with their, their findings, but I would think that we, as a planning board, would want to discourage, even if Mr. Calucci was allowed to put the driveway on the boulevard, would want to discourage that from happening from a public safety standpoint. I mean, I travel that boulevard on a regular basis, and that's, it's a dangerous strip. So to have someone pulling in and out of that area when it can be avoided by coming in on a, a lower classification, less traveled boulevard here, or strip, would, only makes practical sense.
Deed respect, deed restricted to subcompact cars.
There you go. Electric family, so.
All right.
Kevin's raising his hand in the back there telling us where he's home.
All right, Kevin, I'll give you a little latitude. We did close public portion.
I didn't, I thought it was still open. Can't, can't we as a board, Mike has an idea, couldn't we as a board deny the Nicholas Drive driveway entrance and then have the applicant, Mr. Calucci, go back to the county and say, hey, look, you know, it's.
Kevin, did you just hear what I said? I said that as a board, that's something we would not want to do.
Not want to do.
Because we don't want to send people out on the boulevard. Why would we want to do that?
Well, Jason, you don't live there. You don't live there. I do. I, I live on Nicholas Drive. I do.
And you have the benefit of coming in and out on Nicholas Drive. Would you like to back in and out on the boulevard? Of course you would not.
You know what? This is what's on his plans, and this is, this is what he has to go by. And that's your opinion. That's not my opinion. There's, there's tons of people, Mr. Calucci's house that he, that he rents out to tenants. And then one next door to that, and the one next door to that, which you have, you have a duplex there, Jason. You have them on the boulevard. Is that, is that dangerous?
If I had the option to access my property from Nicholas Drive, I would want to access it too, which is the exact reason why Mr. Calucci moved his act from the whole Nicholas Drive.
Look, I'm not against him, I'm not against the subdivision. I'm against the access. The access belongs to West Boulevard. That's where his frontage, that's what his plans are. I don't want him to, to cut, to cut back into Heritage Hills again. It's not a wide street there. It's not wide. It's, it's thin in between two islands. There should be no curb cuts and no driveways there.
Okay, I, I, the board has heard your opinion on access to the boulevard at this point in time.
Joe, can I make a motion that we approve the application, noting the restrictions that the county has deemed necessary?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Make that second.
Yeah, I have a second. Could I have a ruleful vote, please?
Mr. Dagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Spleen?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Schuede?
Yes.
Mr. Petch?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, oops, moving back up here. Let, let's move on to correspondence, please.
Thanks, Terry.
Good night. Okay, for the additional, we had Michael Borelli's letter to township committee for the response to the ordinance oh-six-twenty-one, Operation Cannabis, related business with the planning board response. Gloucester County Planning Board has sent in Gerald Calucci's denial, Ocean Food and Fuels LLC denial. And that was the additional, the original. And of course, I don't see. I believe that was just the minutes.
Yeah, I think that's everything.
That's everything.
I had a quick question. Ocean Fuels, was that our application?
Ocean Food and Fuels is, has not come yet. They're going on the, let's see.
We did that.
Or we did it?
In zone.
Yeah.
So that wasn't our board.
It's just so much hitting me at once. It's like, yeah. Yeah, sorry about that. When they send them together, that's, that's the zoning. That was in March, March 2nd of 2021 for the zoning board for.
Oh, okay.
Perform, it's, they come to me from planning and I just.
I got you. No, I saw it. I got, I was like, did I miss something? And I don't remember an ocean food, but it was a.
You missed that?
It will, obviously, I missed it because I'm not on the zoning board, so I'm on the planning board.
But you read the papers. You're looking at all the.
Okay, let's, let's move on this evening, and let's go to the open public portion. A motion to open the floor to the public, please.
Make a motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Move in second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're open to, the floor is open to the public this evening. Does anyone have anything to say? Nope, we're good?
Motion to close.
I have a motion to close. I have a second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Michael, no, no requirements for a closed session, correct?
Correct.
All right, does anyone else have anything for the board this evening before I call for adjournment?
I just have a question for Lynn. Lynn, do you have any idea which one of them was Wawa?
The last I heard, I was, well, I believe Nick Asprey still has to get me some Aspreys. I know he brought in the bond, and I think they're still like just a little bit shy of getting something. I can't remember exactly everything.
Moving along.
They are moving along, because they came in for their demolition of the houses.
When was that, for a minute?
Did you jump right up there?
Recently, recent.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I wrote, wrote a question. I want to mention, you know, our colleague, Mr. Trevlin, feeling some health issues, currently in the hospital, so, you know, if anybody wants to say a prayer for Ralph.
I'll send a card as well.
Send a card for the board, please.
Yeah, if I hear anything, I'll keep everybody posted.
He's in our thoughts and prayers.
Sorry, Joe.
No, no, that's all right, Jason. Good, good catch. I forgot.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
So move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming out, everyone.